Please rise for the invocation by Reverend James Bernhardt, pastor, Northminster Presbyterian.
Do I do that here?
Let's pray. Our gracious God, as we are gathered here in this warm place tonight, we ask that first of all, you would make us mindful of our friends and neighbors who perhaps on this night suffer from the cold, and we ask that you would help us to be mindful of them and caring for their needs. But also, as we are gathered here, we are grateful for the benefits of liberty expressed in these duly elected officials and in these concerned citizens gathered here. We see this in the neighborhood college folk who are gathered here, as well as the Cub Scouts who are here, and others who have come with business and concern. And so we ask that as we are gathered here, you would help us to extol those virtues known in that great prophet Micah, that we might do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with you, our God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to apologize to each one of you and my fellow council members for running a little late. It has been a long time since I was late for a council meeting. I think it's six years and four days and five hours. With that, I'd like to call on Mr. Bill McBrayer for a presentation of the highly touted, well-respected Furniture Academy at CVCC.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. If you'll look on the board back there, those are the founding five companies that helped start this Furniture Academy. And tonight I have with me Lori Price, who actually runs the program. She's the director of business and industry for Catawba Valley Community College. And at this time, I'd like for her just to pass out a handout so that you could follow along with me a little bit as I talk about it. When Mr. Berry and I discussed conversation and me coming up presenting tonight, I had done this on November 3rd at the Conover City Council. And I said, "So how long do I get?" He goes, "As long as you need." And I said, "Well, I was about 30 to 40 minutes." And Conover, he goes, "That's too much."
Correction. Yeah. I'd like to make a correction.
Yeah, he said, "That's too much." So I'm so enthused about this program that it's going to be tough to put it in 15 minutes, but I'm going to try. Two and a half years ago, this group of furniture folks, representatives, got together at what I call the Employment Security Commission, it's called something else now. And we were talking about that the furniture industry is not dead in Hickory or the uniform area. And we were saying, "How can we get that point across to people?" So we came together with the leadership, the manager at ESC, and we talked to students in the Catawba County Schools, Hickory City Schools, Newton Conover Schools. And we talked about furniture and how alive and well it was in this region. You know, most of the case goods went offshore, but upholstery and other things are still here. And we've got lots of business, and we can't find people to work. That's the big deal. So we said, "What can we do about that?" A long time ago, I was on the Furniture Advisory Board at CVCC, back when furniture was booming. And that program over there was recognized across the country, along with Purdue. You would hear CVCC and Purdue mentioned in the same breath with furniture. Well, when furniture went away, jobs went away, and people got to thinking that furniture is no longer a viable industry. So we said, "What do we do?" So we got together, this group of five companies got together, and we met for over a year and a half. We'd meet every month, sometimes weekly, sometimes bi-weekly. And we sat down and we carved out what we thought were the jobs that we were having the hardest time getting ahold of people to do. So when you go to a family reunion, this Thanksgiving or Christmas, and the little nephew comes and sits on the lap, and you say, "Where do you want to be when you grow up?" Nobody says, "I want to be a sewer or an upholsterer." You know, they want to be the mayor, or the city manager, newspaper reporter, whatever. They don't want to be in furniture. And people, it's had a negative connotation through the years that furniture is not where you want to be. So we said, "We've got to change that. We've got to change that for our livelihood and the livelihood of this uniform area." So we were meeting, and one day I called Dr. Hinchall at the community college. I was riding back up to Hildebrand, and I said, "You know, we need to have this meeting. We need to get all the community college presidents together. We need to talk about what we can do to make a difference in the furniture industry." And he was all on board. I said, "Another thing is, I'm not in favor of everybody getting a trophy. And if you're in kindergarten and you participate, you get a trophy. But everybody doesn't need to get a trophy when you get adulthood." I said, "We'll have this class. If you pass the class, you get a certificate. If you get a certificate, you present it at any industry, furniture industry, they know what you've been through, and we'll hire you." So we sat down, and we went over all this job description, detailed job description. We talked about sewers, we talked about upholsters, we talked about trimmers, we talked about spring up, we talked about product development, all the vital pieces of the puzzle for the furniture industry. Because if you walk through the plant that I'm with, and I'm with Lexington Home Brands, if you walk down through the sewing department, you see, no offense, but people with your color hair, Mayor, and all those people are going to be retiring. And in our industry, and upholstery especially, this is what you use, and this is what you use. So when I'm retiring and I'm walking out the door, I'm taking this and this with me. And unlike a football team, and I use Newton Conover because they had great championship teams, when they had the elementary school and the rec league, they all ran the same plays. So by the time they got to Don Patrick in Newton Conover, they knew what each other was going to do. They knew the plays. It was a feeder program into that senior high level. We don't have a feeder program. Furniture industry doesn't have a feeder program. That's what this is about. This is the feeder program. So we sat down, and we sat down with Lori and her staff, and we said, "This is what we got to have." And we detailed out specifically what a sewer needs to do, what a sewer needs to know, and what they need to perform their job. We did that with the upholstery, we did that with the trimmers, we did that with all the So we launched this program January 6th of this year. We had 15 people that started. We start with a, can you, let's see, I guess I'm the guy. Furniture fundamentals, and y'all have that in your handouts, but Furniture Fundamentals is the class. The class meets Monday through Thursday, 5:30 PM through 8:30 PM. We planned it that way for lots of reasons. One is, if I'm employed but want to try something different, I can go and go to this class. If I'm unemployed, I can go to this class. And so it's over at the community college at the East Campus. There's so many beautiful things about this program, one being that the teachers of this class, it's not some academia standing up saying, "Class turnover, in your book, page 40, we're going to watch the video on how to spring up a frame." It's people that are at my plant and these other plants that volunteer to go teach. They volunteer to go teach, but the community college actually pays them a salary between $16 and $20 an hour to go over there and teach. So imagine the wealth of knowledge, if you're a student, that you have somebody that has been upholstering all day or spring upping all day at Lexington Home Brands, and after I'm finished at 3:30, I clean up, and I go down to the community college, and then I teach you what I've been doing for years. I mean, you can't buy that. I mean, it's invaluable. So that's one of the best parts about this whole program. The program was launched and has been a great success, so great that we have a waiting list in excess of 100 people. I mean, that's mind-boggling. And that was, in excess of 100 people, is when we had our open house on October 6th. Now it's November whatever, and it's grown more than that because we had an open house, we invited the governor, the governor came, and the next day Lori said the phones exploded. We had a nice article in the paper that Sunday prior to that. And so we take this fundamental class, and they sit in there for three hours, and we have somebody come in and talk about spring up, let's say. And they talk about it. The next class, they might talk about upholstery. We also teach the soft skills, you know. One of the biggest problems I have as an employer is to get, not, it's to find people, but when you find them, getting them to come to work, you know, that's a tough battle. You know, be there on time, do the job we ask you to do, get along with the people in your department, those are issues that to us sound elementary and easy, but it's not, let me tell you. So we also have a class on application filling out, resume filling out, how to interview, how to dress, you know, the whole gamut. And that's what that fundamental class entails. Once you've passed the fundamental class, then you go into your discipline of choice, be it manual cutting, automatic cutting, or whatever the discipline is. The other beautiful thing about this program is, besides the five companies that we have that work in unison together, which is a beautiful thing in itself, we also have companies that sell us products, you know, Hickory Springs, Ligon Plaid, or whoever. And we call on them, and we say, "We have this program, and we need your help." And by doing that, we had Gerber Technology gave us a state-of-the-art, brand-new Taurus automated cutting machine, placed it at the community college. They'll bring people from across the country to show them this piece and show it in operation. So we're reaching out to the community of vendors, if you will. I like to call them supply partners. I had an old boss one time that said, "Vendors sell hot dogs on the street." So we call them supply partners, and they come in and they help us out. And so you got all these things working together. We also have, you know, to make this thing work, you got to have a champion, and I'm kind of, I hate that word, and I hate to be called that, but you got to have somebody pushing the ball. You know, Lori called a company one time and never got a call back. She called again, she never got a call back. And we were at a function together, a furniture-type function, and I said, "There's so-and-so from so-and-so," and she goes, "Well, I've been trying to get ahold of them all week." I just went over there while he was eating lunch. I said, "Can I see you when you're finished?" He goes, "Yes." So we came over, I introduced him to Lori, I said, "She's been trying to get ahold of someone, wants your company for three days." He says, "Give me your card, I'll have somebody to call you by the end of the day." Sure enough, they did. Now we got all this stuff. I mean, so she could have done that all day long, but if you have an industry person calling on people that you're dealing with day in and day out, they tend to take a little more notice of it. So this program has really been going, it's at the East Campus. I don't know where to go next. I will back up and give some kudos to the mayor. These signs, I know they look wonderful and beautiful and compliments of a sign code, but those are our five companies, and we take these people out of our fundamental class, and we also give them a tour of our factories. And that opens them up, if they didn't, if they've never been in a furniture factory, it just opens their eyes. And when you walk down through there, they say, "Well, what kind of money can you make?" Say, "Well, the average upholsterer in this area, I would say, is $25 an hour." But then I tell them that we had a guy two years ago that was an inside upholsterer, his W-2 was $91,000, and their eyes get that big. And I said, "The next year, we didn't have quite as much overtime, and he was only $84,000 a year." So that gets people's attention and the excitement that this program has got, just through word of mouth. We had people calling from Canada, from Minnesota. We had one person coming from Winston-Salem, back and forth every night, driving back and forth to Minnesota. We had one lady that was a designer, specifier, an architect up in Minnesota, that when she would go to your house and want to do a design for you, she would have to farm it out with somebody. They would have to cut it, and they'd have to sew it and upholster it. She's coming down here to learn how to do it herself. So when she goes, and Libby wants a new chair, she can go cut it and sew it and upholster it, and she's done it all herself. So that's not helping us here in this uniform area, but it's helping the furniture industry as a whole. In this uniform area, people are already being employed by our industry that are taking this class. You know, I'm calling Lori and I'm saying, "I needed a trimmer really bad. Who's your star trimmer?" And she could tell me who the star trimmer is, and I'll go over there and try to, you know, if they're not employed, I'll hire them. If they are employed, you know, that's another thing we do in the industry. We steal from each other all the time, back and forth, back and forth. So I'll go over there and try to, you know, roll one in, but, you know, it's just, it's a great thing. I could stand up here and talk till the sun comes up. I mean, I'm enthusiastic about it. It's a wonderful program, and one of these days, we're going to come knocking on your door because we're going to need your help, and that's not too far away. We already have negotiations on a new building because that East Campus is too small. We've outgrown it just immediately with a waiting list of excess of 100 people. I mean, imagine the people that it's touching and the families that it's touching of what we're doing, and it's just wonderful. Questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Zagro.
How many jobs are available out there today in the upholstery business?
Oh, gosh.
In the four county area?
That's a tough question. Today, I could use two upholsters and a trimmer at our place. If you look in the paper, and I'm not giving you a political answer here because I don't know the exact answer to your, yeah, I don't know the exact answer to your question. But any given Wednesday and Sunday especially, if you look in the paper and you look in the won ads, you're going to see, out of this lineup, you're going to see a sewer, upholster, and a trimmer, and maybe a cutter, and maybe a spring up. So all of these jobs are needed today, I mean, today. This program is so good because of a collective group of people doing it. The Innovate Catawba had a meeting, and we're trying, they're trying to emulate what we're doing to try to get other, it's like a manufacturing academy. Now, depending on your business, you might not can do necessarily furniture and dig into it as deep as we are, but, you know, it's working. What we're doing is working, and other manufacturers are wanting to do the same thing. So it's a great thing. I'm speaking Wednesday, actually, in Alexandria County at a group over there to talk about it, and so it's wonderful. So one of these days, when I come back up here and I'm going to say, "Hey, we need you. I hope you will feel my enthusiasm and the need in this area for what we're doing is affecting hundreds and thousands of people."
Bill, how many can you graduate, what's the cycle to graduate?
Well, right now, we've had 27 people go through the class, the fundamental class and their particular discipline. We've not had a graduate per se yet because it's, you know, to learn a trade from scratch, depends on your aptitude, it could go from six months to a year, to a year and a half or two. But we, you know, at the Conover Council meeting, they said, "Well, why don't you get more teachers? And why don't you have more, you know, can we not get more rooms?" Well, yeah, you can, but the beauty of this program is, we don't have academic professors teaching. We have people that work all day and then come teach. And I'm trying to reach out into the retirement community of people that used to do it, that still have this and still have this, that can come in and help us to learn these disciplines.
Well, we see your enthusiasm.
Do you feel it? There's my information and Lori's information. If you've got any questions later on, you know, her phone rings off the hook, my phone rings off the hook. Another thing, that people will come in and want a job, and we're advertising for experience something, and they don't have the experience, I give them this brochure, and I tell them, "You need to go to the music college and see Lori Price, and we'll get you started." Did I leave anything out? Any other questions? I really appreciate the invite to come. You know, anybody that wants me to talk about this program, I go, you know, from shore to shore because that's how much we like it. And I thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Well, Bill is mostly enthusiastic, but all of these other company representatives here have very enthusiastic liaisons with him. And you can feel the excitement of the president, Governor, and all of them. I'd like to ask Senator Andy Wells, and two of them. Andy, the last time was your first term, right? And I want you to know, Andy had been on the job probably six weeks or so, until I started hearing from people in the hallway through the league and municipalities and other sources. Andy's working, and he's pro-business, and I said, "Yeah, we like that about him, and that's exactly what we wanted to do." But he made an impact immediately, and that has paid all the amount for him that he's moved the house to the center. But I've been honored to have the opportunity to present this proclamation in recognition of the League of Municipalities Community Champion Award, Senator Andy Wells. Whereas Andy Wells is the representative for the 96th District, which represents the Colley County and the State Senator-elect for the 42nd District. Whereas the League of Municipalities is a nonpartisan federation of more than 540 municipalities in North Carolina. Whereas at the League's annual conference, City Vision 2014, Delwyn Briesberg, the award for the League's Community Action, Community Champion Award for 2014 was presented to Representative Wells. Whereas the League presents the award to legislators who make strong efforts to work with municipal officers and ensure municipal entries are represented during the legislative process. Whereas Senate Deal 163, now session law 2014, is an act designated to reclaim water as a source water under certain conditions, such as the use of reclaimed water to supplement source water for potable water treatment, is an appropriate drinking measure in regions of the state with limited potable resources under new limits. I'm not sure where they're at there. But it does sound, it sounds impressive to me. Mayor? Whereas Representative Wells was the bill sponsor and is behind the scenes in that work to usher this bill into place. Whereas he also voted his colleagues' questions during the House floor debate. And whereas, due to his efforts, the League achieves one of its top water zone decisions. Whereas Representative Wells contributes to the awareness of municipal entries to his upbringing as the son of the city manager, Mr. Wells, right here in Hickory, Mandy? There it is. How many, what is it, 16 years?
69, and I think it's over.
Do you think he was in, and how many years of the place? He's been his entire career in his entire career in going to service. Now therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I hereby proclaim the Reverend R. D., as a matter of recognition, a the League's Community Champion Award to Representative Andy Wells, and we also thank his faithful wife Suzanne for taking care of all the things that need to be done so Andy can be one of our leading causes.
Being in the legislative life has been an interesting experience, and we've gone through a big transition this state politically. And it took a couple of years for the League of Municipalities to figure out what it had, but they made that transition. They got a great team in place. There are things happening, and we're working across the aisle in the legislature with the League to get things done. Even the other community champion was a member of the other party. But we've been doing a bipartisan effort to make things happen. Cities are where, that's where our state is built, that's the source of budgets of our residents and a lot of our tax base, and we have to keep cities healthy. And we're working on that, and that's got our attention, and we'll continue that attention as long as I'm there. Thank you.
I think I figured my wrong name was out there. I'm going to call Dana Comiskey, the Dean of Medical College, to come forward for our graduation ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me time to come before you and everyone here at City Council. Very kind of them. Unexpected, thank you. So thank you for allowing me to come before everybody to present our Neighborhood College class tonight. Our 2014 has 19 participants who are graduating, so we are very excited that we had such a great, large class this time, and everyone who went through it, well, other than a couple that had to back out in the very beginning, all 19 are graduating tonight, so we're thrilled with that. They have dedicated the last 11 weeks of their time to going through this Neighborhood College program, which encompasses, as you've known before, but so everybody else can be aware, what they've done is they've learned about all the departments at the city, they've learned a little bit about Catawba County versus the city of Hickory and how that operates. They have learned about boards and commissions, they have been invited to city council meetings, and they have attended numerous ones. They have gone to boards and commission meetings, they have gone to city partner events. So they have been out and about in our community, and they have been very active, a lot of them have been very active and exceeding, way exceeding, the goals set for this program. So I'm very proud of all of them. I'm appreciative of the time that they take to go through this because 11 weeks, two hours every Monday night is a lot of time out of their lives, and they're well-deserving of the acknowledgement tonight from City Council and from the city of Hickory. But I also want to thank you for allowing us to continue to host this program, and as well, I want to thank all the professors who taught, many of them are here, our department heads. Without them, this would not be possible. It is their knowledge that is shared, not mine. So I am grateful to all of them who helped share and have, I have heard an overwhelming, resounding comment year after year that I've done this, and I know Mandy before me, how enthusiastic our staff is and how appreciative I think that the citizens are of the staff and all that they do. It shows in their work, it shows in their excitement when they talk to the class, and it makes me proud every day to be an employee of the city of Hickory. As I go through it every year, I learn something new as well. I can say that I am impressed with this program every year, and the citizens, I learn something new from them as well as you do, so I'm excited to stand here tonight and present them to you. you. I could stand here all night and talk about them and everything that goes into this, but I won't. I have a couple of people that I have chosen based off of their interest and also based off their time living in Hickory. I thought it'd be nice again to give you the perspective of somebody that's new to the city as well as somebody that's been here for quite a while. So I'm going to first call up Gretchen, who's Gretchen, Gretchen Edding to talk and then Melvin Mears right after her. So Gretchen.
It worked. Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. Do you remember that little six-minute and twenty-eight-second video? Of course you do. That well-crafted video was all we knew about Hickory before moving here from a small town in Missouri. Eight months ago, my husband received and accepted a job offer from a local engineering firm. Within three weeks, what earthly possessions we didn't sell, give, or throw away, we packed into a small U-Haul trailer and headed east in a minivan with four kids. Talk about an adventure. We took a giant leap of faith into a new life and a new area, both belonging to the category for us of the completely unknown. But fortunately, that video gave us hope and even better, it was true. Once arriving, we were not disappointed. Of course, not everything went smoothly. Although all the locations in the video were equally beautiful in real life, we had difficulty finding a place to rent. We were constantly lost. And to make matters worse, the map we purchased didn't even show McDonald Parkway, apparently a major thoroughfare. But none of this mattered because we were in the land of opportunity and things could only get better. After all, I had already fallen in love with Hickory. Street names such as Fifth Street Court Drive Place Northwest could not quench my love for our new home. Besides, that video had me at the interior shot of the library. And then, the Science Center, Art Museum, Symphony, Farmer's Market, Under the Sales, stole my heart for good. So naturally, when I discovered the chance to learn more about Hickory through Neighborhood College, I jumped at it. And now, what could I tell you that you don't already know? I could tell you about the beautiful library, its great resources, and subject sleuths ready to aid in locating any information. I could go on about how thorough the Public Works and Public Utilities do their jobs and their high standards of safety for the residents of Hickory. Or perhaps, I could remind you of the efficiency of planning and development and their great master plan and vision for the city while simultaneously maintaining care and attention to details. Or how about the police and fire departments, which enjoy a great camaraderie whether working together or separately for the protection of those living here? Not to be overlooked is the Parks and Rec Department, which truly does work so others can play by providing ample locations and opportunities for exercise and sport on an individual or team level for people of all ages. And how could I forget the airport and museum housing a slice of local history and a hub accepting private planes and ready for commercial flights when the time comes? Such great assets, Hickory has it all. And last, but certainly not least, you all. All of you who are here tonight and those who work at City Hall, a well-oiled machine whose departments cooperate tirelessly for the good of the citizens of Hickory. Not to mention a very accessible mayor, two-three-eight-one-four-six-five. So, what did I gain from Neighborhood College besides some great friendships and a great view of how a city of this size and quality operates? I came away convinced my impression of this city was accurate. Hickory, on a corporate as well as individual level, takes care of its own. You, the residents of Hickory, and those who work for the city care about the city as a whole and each and every person living here. Thank you for making us feel so welcome. Thank you for making Hickory such a great place to live. I look forward to being here for a very long time. Oh, and by the way, my husband says thanks for letting us in on the best secret in North Carolina.
Melvin, that's a tough act to follow, though.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. So, she had the high bar. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, I'm Melvin Mears and I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Hickory. I took a job transfer to Hickory in 1987 and moved my family here sight unseen. We did that because we were North Carolina natives and we wanted to get back and it put us within two hours of family. That is the only reason we came to Hickory. Well, we didn't know what God had in store for us. We have been truly blessed. Hickory has been a wonderful place to live and raise our family. Hickory is our home. Even so, I really haven't known much about how this city functions and how it attempts to serve the needs and the desires of the citizens of Hickory. I decided to attend the Neighborhood College in the hopes of getting that perspective and getting to know some of the leaders taking us forward. On the final course evaluation, we were asked to indicate our favorite part of the Neighborhood College. I couldn't pick a favorite. I found the entire curriculum critical to telling the story of how Hickory serves its citizens. I'm impressed with the credentials of the management and their staffs. I'm impressed at the cooperation and the good-natured competition and camaraderie that is apparent between different functions in the city. I'm impressed with the impassioned focus on establishing and maintaining the highest standards for Hickory. And I'm impressed with the leadership's vision for the future of Hickory. I never got the impression that serving Hickory was just a job to anyone we met. They care about Hickory and it's evident in their enthusiasm and their presentations. I've been so impressed with the people in the Neighborhood College that I've shared something from every class with the people I encounter. And I'm encouraged everyone to attend the Neighborhood College. It's a wonderful program. You can be proud of it, keep it alive. I'm proud to be a citizen of Hickory, North Carolina. I'm grateful for the many people that make it a wonderful place to live, worship, work, and play. That includes not only the city employees, but the many citizen volunteers. And I'm grateful to the Neighborhood College and the Communications Department that helped me gain a greater appreciation for my home, Hickory, North Carolina. Thank you and God bless.
That's why I have them talk, they do a way better job than I ever could. And I'm going to tell you, I mean, every one of nineteen of them have a different story and those are just two, so I encourage anyone to talk to them because they're all unique and they all gained something different from this class. So I'm very appreciative of meeting each and every one of them. So now, it is time for their graduations. So if I could have City Council and Mr. Berry come to the front and we have a certificate, we have a little gift of a portfolio and a pin to give them. And I will call them alphabetically, hopefully, I think the certificates are in alphabetical order. And you can come up one at a time, shake hands as I call your name. This was not rehearsed. Okay, we're going to start Patricia Bowman. And I'm going to keep calling so that we keep moving. Lowell Carlson and Alice Carlson. Pamela Quarter. Yvette Fuller. Sean Little. Melvin Mears. Lynn Montgomery. Gretchen and Matt Edding. Mark Post. Susan Reese. James and Joy Tilton. David Yolianna. Buffy Benoit. Charles Willingham. David York. And last but not least, Teresa Young. Thank y'all for welcoming our 2014-19 graduates to Neighborhood College. And last, but definitely not least, we have our city manager, McBerry, who's going to give our last charge to our participants and graduates now of our Neighborhood College.
How many years now have we been?
This is sixteen, right? Sixteen, yeah, sixteen years. We've graduated quite a few from the class in sixteen years, so thank you, Ms. Berry.
First, let's give them all a round of applause. So as Dana mentioned, my role in this is to give you your charge moving forward. The university that I graduated from has a motto of "Enter to learn, go forth to serve." And I would say that a motto now applies to you all as Neighborhood College graduates. When organizations talk about the people that they serve, a lot of times in the private sector, we heard the term "customer" and we use that around the city as well and we talk about customer service. But when we think about it, really, a customer is receiving a service or a good in exchange for a payment. And what I would suggest to you is that your role is much higher than that. Anciently, the philosopher Plato, to one of the great city-states of Athens, described a citizen as someone who has the right to participate. And now, as Neighborhood College graduates, you are super citizens, which means not only do you have the right, but you have the obligation and the education to participate in your city. And as you learned, we have many opportunities in the city of Hickory for you to continue to be engaged with the city. We have numerous boards and commissions, you'll see later on the agenda, City Council will make appointments to those boards and commissions, lots of opportunities for you to stay involved and engaged. And of course, Melvin already mentioned, opportunities as volunteers. The coaches in Parks and Recreation, at the library, and various city departments where we simply have citizens who want to be part of the city, want to serve, want to provide those services to their fellow citizens. You all are very diverse. Some of you have only been here seven months, some of you have been here your entire life. And we welcome you to the program and through the graduation, whether you're relatively new or an old hand. And in conclusion, want to thank you and reiterate the opportunity, especially with the bonds that have been passed by the citizens of Hickory. Lots of opportunity for community engagement as we move forward and City Council plans and builds the various projects that are part of the bond referendum. So I want to encourage you to be part of that as well as you go forward. And you have entered to learn and now go forth to serve. That's your charge. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to call on persons requested to be heard. We have Ryan Neitz.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Crone, Mr. Berry, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ryan Neitz. I'm speaking on behalf of Yellow Cab Company and I'm speaking here to request a small fare increase for us. I'm going to make it quick today. I'm going to hand out a copy of the fares for other companies in other cities that have similar population as us. As you'll see, the majority of them that we provided you have a higher charge than us. Most of the trips that we want to actually speak in regards to, the rate actually isn't going to change, we only want to institute a minimum charge of $6. So this will really only affect our shorter trips. Right now, our charge is a $2 drop charge and a $2 per mile charge. So the trips that'll only be affected would be the ones that'd be less than two miles. We'd like to institute a $6 minimum charge and this, we think, would help cover our expenses on trips that are a little bit further out into the city, take us out to the city limits. Short trips out there might only bring us a charge of $3 and we think if we had a $6 minimum charge, this will help cover our expenses for those kind of trips and still provide the driver and the company with a little bit of compensation. And I'm going to give Brian just a moment to speak if he'd like to also. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
And Brian Taylor, also regarding the cab fare.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to come for you. Now, like Mr. Neitz has stated, we are, the city is expanding, you know, pretty much, you know, in the Mountain View, in the Brookford and, you know, things like that, and the city's getting bigger. And the reason we are requesting this little bit of a rate increase is to try to help us as far as our expense because we're driving like on a trip. We leave the cab stand, which is right over downtown Hickory, we have to drive down, say, to your shop on Fair Grove Church Road, Mr. R., and pick up if somebody wants to go to the hospital. Well, according to the city docket, the city council code, we have to run that on the meter, which is $2 drops, $2 a mile. That's going to run like $2.60. And that's not even feasible, you know, for the gas and the expense on the car for us having to drive out that far. That's why we were just trying to get a little bit of a rate increase to try to help minimize the charge on that and make up for our time and trips, you know, distance driven out that far. You know, anything that's ran inside the city limits is ran on the meter. Anything outside the city limits, we charge basically $2 a mile. But that's why we're just trying to get a little bit of a rate increase to try to help out for the distance traveled out so far. You know, like Mr. Neitz said, it would only affect, you know, the little short trips, the little short areas. But we just need, you know, to try to make up a little something to help out the distance traveled, to keep up the service to the community and everything and help out us, you know, with our expenses and stuff because we are paying for the gas and the oil and everything on that and we don't get paid by hour or nothing like that. We're basically commission-paid. And that, you know, to try to help us out a little bit, that's why we come for you all because the City Council actually has to approve. So we just thought we'd come tonight and present this before you all. And we gave, we looked up some other rates, different cities with the population, according to city Hickory population and that's what we tried to go by and figured that might help out a little bit. We just thought we'd present this to you all and see what maybe we could get worked out. Is there any question or anything?
Do we know how long the current system's been in place, how long the current rates?
I think Mr. Che Fackens told us tonight, he said he thinks the last rate increase was in 2006, I believe. I believe it was just a tad longer than that, but Mr. Fackens said he thinks that 2006 is when the last rate increase was and it went from $1.80 a mile to $2 a mile is all it did. Twenty cents extra on the mile.
Do you have any statistics about how many short trips that you're talking about versus?
I've got like one trip here, it's from Ridge Crest Apartments. And we picked up, we take to Catawba Hospital, it's only about eight tenths of a mile, it takes us about three minutes to run that trip from Ridge Crest to Catawba Hospital, runs like $3.60. In actuality, we have to leave from downtown Hickory and head out there and it's actually about 9.7 miles and takes us about 21 minutes to do the trip to get down there and get back. And it takes, like I said, $3 to And it takes, like I said, $3.60. Basically, the, it's not even making anything off the trip at all. It's all going into the gas tank right now.
So to be clear, what you're suggesting is that the $6, it would be either $6 or what the meter says, whichever's greater, right?
Yeah, we're running the meter inside the city limits. And if it doesn't come up to $6, then the trip be $6. If it's more than $6, it'd be whatever's on the meter.
Do you think the increase is going to affect your riders? Do you think the increase will affect your riders?
The last rate increase we had affected it at the first. And then people eventually come back around, started riding again because, you know, they needed the transportation. Understood why we had to get a rate increase. It'll probably, you know, hurt a little bit at first. But other than that, people will still eventually ride. It's just, like I said, we're just trying to make up the distance traveled. We get trips. We had one the other evening from Crown Plaza Hotel on LR Boulevard. Went right across the street to Outback Steakhouse, $2.20. And, you know, I mean, it's just not feasible for us, either driving from downtown our way out there and then having to drive back for $2.20. That's why we're just trying to get a little bit of a rate increase to help that out expense-wise.
Can you turn it down?
No, you can't turn any orderly passenger down. The only way you can turn down a trip is if they ran on us, owe us money, or gave us trouble. You have to go after any passenger, no matter where it's at. Any more questions? I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Chrome, Mr. Barry. Cliff Moon, 2925 Eighth Street Court Northeast. I'll be very brief. This has been a wonderful night, but I enjoyed it very much. I normally appear before you at about this time of the year for a proclamation that you normally do now. And I just wanted to remind you of, before I do, as this is the first City Council meeting since our recent election and the bond referendum, I want to personally take the opportunity to thank each of you, commend you for the work you all did. As one of the first people to stand up here and say, "This is a great idea. This is where we've got to go. This is the future." And you can raise my taxes a little bit. That you, that I wanted to say, I really appreciated attending the presentations, working with the committee. It was actually the greatest experience, as you can imagine, during the recent campaign for me. As I was probably the only candidate running for office, public office, who actually came out for the bond referendum unequivocally. You can, I was very pleased that evening when that was the big win for me of the night, as you can imagine. But it was a wonderful thing. And I just really wanted somebody to stand up here this close after the election to thank each of you. You were there to answer questions. You were there to say why we needed this and why we needed to be moved forward. And I always said, when I stood up here talking about it, that it required you to be behind it and to be behind it fully. It was great working with the other citizens in this community. And I got to know some people that I hadn't gotten to know quite as well by doing so as well. So that, I wanted to say that. The other reason I'm here is because I get a letter from a fellow from the North Carolina Human Rights Coalition every year about this time, reminding us that we're approaching Bill of Rights Day and Human Rights Week during, in this country, during the week of December the 10th through the 16th. I wanted to also commend you, over the last few years, of having this proclamation out there for Bill of Rights Day. And I hope you'll do it again. Don't think you need to do it on the big hard board and everything. But it really is something that's nice to put out in the community and say that, how we stand. And civically, how important it is that we remember. As an educator, that's real important to me, that civic duties and civic rights are so important. I want to mention very quickly that last year, Governor McCrory, the mayors of Black Mountain, Carboro, Cary, Chapel Hill, Durham, Garner, Hickory, you all, Hillsborough Nightdale, Lewisburg, Marion Pinehurst, Raleigh, Reedsville, Selma, and Zebulon, all issued proclamations or also had events in regard to this day, as well as did the county commissioners of Orange County and the chancellor of North Carolina State University. I will also be presenting this request to our county commissioners this year. And again, I hope you will do it again. And thank you so much for every time you've done it in the past. Thank you very much.
My recollection is that North Carolina was not one of the original ratifiers of the Constitution.
Rhode Island and North Carolina refused to ratify without a Bill of Rights.
Because we insisted on a Bill of Rights.
Yes, Rhode Island.
Once we had the Bill of Rights, North Carolina immediately ratified.
Yes.
North Carolinians, we were hard-headed back then. Hey, I love it. We'll be hard-headed 200 years from now. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick thing to say. I'm sorry Andy Wells left early. But relative to furniture, I don't know if many of you know that the desk that he will be sitting at in the state senate was built in Hickory, North Carolina. All of the furniture in the state senate was built by Hickory White. And the upholstery was done by Cabot Wren. So Hickory is in a prominent place in the state senate. So just thought I'd tell them that. And I'll tell my neighbor Andy that, if he doesn't already know it.
I'm going to ask the scout leaders here, if they will, just to stand up and tell us who you have with you and what troops you represent.
I guess. Yeah, we're with PAC 250, Denbury, Leblanc. And these are the boys here. You want to stand up for us, son?
Mr. Mayor, while we're recognizing folks, I would like to take just a second and recognize Katie Hayward. Katie, if you want to wave, stand up for a second. Katie is an intern with us. She's a senior at Hickory High School.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of November the 4th?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Gass, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. All members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patton. Patton, second by Gass. Rag and roll. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to be approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Lael. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. New business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item of new business this evening is a public hearing for consideration of a voluntary contiguous annexation. And I'll ask Mr. Cal over here to come to the podium and present that item to council prior to the public hearing.
Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Chrome. As Mr. Barry indicated, tonight's public hearing will be consideration of a voluntary annexation of contiguous property. The applicant of the property is North Lake South Star. And the property is located at 2415 Springs Road Northeast, which is the site of the former St. Stevens Elementary School site. The property is a slot there with 20 acres in size. The developers of the property request an annexation order to obtain connection to the city's utilities, water and sewer specifically. The proposal is to develop the property into a retail shopping center is the idea. It will consist of an anchor tent, anchor building, two smaller buildings, as well as up to five out parcels, which may actually be five or more out parcels depending upon the tenants of the property. The map before you here is showing the existing city jurisdictional areas. The area in blue is showing our existing city limits. And the area in yellow is showing our ETJ area. As you can see, this is a photograph. This is showing after the school was actually demolished after the fire, destroyed most of the building there. This is, Walgreens is actually McDonald's here now. This is Fresh Air Galaxy, McDonald Parkway. And as far as existing zoning, you can see this is all commercial zone property. It's a community center, commercial zone property, some residential in these areas, as well as these areas. And I have, this kind of shows the preliminary layout of what is being developed on the property at this point in time. Much of the development that has taken place thus far on the property has been done under a grading and erosion control plan. Lots of the trees and underbrush have been removed. Site grading has begun, leveling out the site. There'll be some retaining walls to the rear of the property. And this is what the ultimate layout will be on the property. We have received, we being the city, have received the initial construction plans for the infrastructure for this little property. Those were received by our office Friday of last week. And they're in the process of being reviewed now. As you can see, this is basically your anchor tenant. Two smaller buildings in this area. And these are proposed out parcels. As you can see, some of the areas in question at this point in time, as far as out parcels may change as either larger or smaller tenants come into play with respect to the future development of the property. In total, what's shown on site is about 60,000 square foot of retail space. So it's, they've identified a grocery being in this area and smaller retail shops in this area. Access to the property will be from Springs Road, as well as from 24th, as well as, I believe this is 17th Street and 92nd Street, I think is the name of it, for the property. With regards to how it all matters out with respect to the city's services, city evaluated the property. And we're able to serve the property with all the necessary services, water, sewer, police, fire, sanitation. It does meet all the requirements for regards to annexation with the state requirements that's applied upon cities with annexation. Based upon these findings, staff recommends City Council approval of the annexation. With that, I will close and answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you. Mayor had to leave, so I'll be filling in. It's a public hearing. I opened the public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for the proposal? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the proposal? With that, I close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Gass and a second by Seaver. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass unanimously.
I bugged it eyes, I came in the door there.
Nice to get it back on the tax books. Second item of new business this evening is another public hearing for consideration of a request to close a portion of 15th Street Northwest. And I'll ask the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to present that to council prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, Mayor, members of council. This item refers to page 76 and 77 in your agenda packet. A couple of sketches there, if you need to look at that. Again, this is a request to close a portion of 15th Street Northwest between Second Avenue and First Avenue Place Northwest. This is essentially beside McDonald's on Second Avenue, right at 321. We've met with a developer a couple of times. They've shown us a site plan that would essentially rebuild that McDonald's. It's time to rebuild. They'd like to move it a little bit further away from 321, which will help from a traffic standpoint. That'll move the 321 driveway and the Second Avenue driveway further away from the intersection. So that is definitely a plus. We've worked through a couple of site versions of this. I think, again, if this is closed, that'll allow them to proceed on with design of their facility. Change, I think the goal is maybe to be in construction in June, July timeframe of 2015. They'll go through some steps between now and then to, based on this site plan. Staff recommends approval of this closing, subject to essentially the site plan we've been seeing, working towards that goal. And also the developer relocating any utilities that need to be relocated as that street closes. So this would be a sort of a good redevelopment of that intersection, that side of that intersection. First Avenue Place Northwest will be a little bit shorter than it is sort of coming from Rental Sandwich Shop, behind Rental Sandwich Shop. But it'll dead end into essentially the Hess station and McDonald's there. So there'll be an outlet on that little piece into their parking lots, if you will. So there's still connectivity between those businesses in there and First Avenue Place. We'd recommend approval of the closing.
So Hess is losing their access, one of their accesses.
Actually, no. No. They have a sort of a, 15th does dead end to their parking lot, as does First Avenue. So essentially, you would be able to, in this case, come to Hess as First Avenue Place. Or if you came through the McDonald's parking lot, you would be able to get into their lot. So those two businesses are interconnected, which is one of the comments staff had to them. And they adjusted their site plan to make that happen.
From time to time, right there at that intersection, I see some kind of service truck there. It looks like it's pumping something from under the ground there. Do you have, is that?
Well, that was, that was actually due to the, it doesn't happen anymore. That was actually due to the flooding that happened in June of '13. There was a storm drainage and a sewer line failure associated with that. And working through DOT, and of course, our own utilities, that has been repaired and fixed. The pumping you saw was essentially us taking care of the sewer. It was being stored there. We were pumping it daily so that things kept moving.
So that's going to help the truck traffic that has to turn there?
Part of that redevelopment will help a little bit with that turning radius there also. But yeah, the driveway's moving away from the intersection some will definitely, definitely help. Any questions?
There's a little ATM machine, cash points or something in there. Is it going to remain on that property somewhere or take it out?
If I'm not mistaken, the ATM stays. I believe it's actually on the edge of the gas station property, I believe, right back in there. So that's not affected right there.
Is that the bank's ATM?
No.
Oh, it's not a bank anymore, is it?
Yeah, it's a bank.
Yeah, it's Community One.
That's a couple.
There's Community One Bank that is there and will remain. And then there's also, what Mr. Seaver was talking about, there is a little drive-up card machine sort of behind the bank.
It used to be on the other side of 321.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'll defer the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak. We first ask if anyone would like to speak against the proposal. And then we ask if anyone would like to speak for it. And we have opportunities for rebuttal and surrebuttal. And I'm sure Ms. Patton and all of them. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one, we do have someone desiring to speak.
There was a letter. We got a letter.
We got one, yeah.
Yes, there was a letter.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Chrome. Wanted to just thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and talk with you on behalf of McDonald's and the local property owners, Mr. John Link. And I think you do have a letter from him. He was unable to be here this evening. But I feel like this proposal is a win-win for three reasons. One, I think it's a better traffic flow for safety reasons is a win. Number two, you have a local business person who's very community-minded. Gives him an opportunity to redevelop and expand. And number three, it's a great way to improve your entranceway. This is a gateway to your city. They're committed to doing a good job and having a good icon store there that's at a crossroads and a a crossroads and a good look and view for folks who are coming to visit our city. So I would just thank you for the opportunity to be here and recommend that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Now, will the mayor have to move his headquarters?
That's just one of them.
Okay. You're expanding.
I do not have a conflict of interest. Buying iced tea at McDonald's does not constitute a conflict of interest.
How much do you pay for that tea?
How much tea have you bought?
I will tell you, if you get one, it's a dollar seven. Two is $2.14, three is $3.21. If you throw in a large decaf, it's $4.28.
Down to a penny.
Any comments, or do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, you need to close the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. I close, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
So move.
Motion.
Motion by guests, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
First departmental report this evening is an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. After discussion in closed session of the city manager's fiscal year 1314 performance, city council unanimously voted to consider an open session, an amendment, which would be the First Amendment to the manager's June 22, 2004 employment agreement. That amendment adds Section 20, one-time bonus, which states the employee shall receive a one-time lump sum bonus of $4,350 effective as of July 1, 2014. And I'll be happy to address any further questions, or you all can discuss that if you see fit.
At one time, we discussed changing the way your annual pay increase or theoretically decreased. Your pay increase is determined, is that, that's not being incorporated in this?
No.
Do we have a motion or discussion? Would be approved.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm voting no.
I'm an aye, but I wanted to, yeah, I didn't, I didn't jump on the discussion quick enough. But I wanted to explain a little bit sort of what's behind it, so that we understand that, that our city manager doesn't receive raises, if I understand his employment contract correctly, you know, like a lot of city employees do, based on their performance evaluations and merit pay increases and all that. Because he's a, he is a contract employee, and that contract does not allow for that. So after looking at that in closed session, the city council considered that over the last five, six years, I don't know, it's been, it's been quite, it's been, it's been a while, five or six years. There been no adjustment there, and we felt that that sum was appropriate to, and at least, you know, I can speak for myself, I felt that was appropriate to pay Mr. Berry. It does not change the fact that he continues to be, year to year, employed in accordance with his contract, and there's nothing in there that says that he's entitled to a, to a raise, nor is there anything in there that would prevent us from considering a similar amendment at some point in the future, if council such chooses.
I get confused on this. I thought his, I know the practice we have followed is that he has gotten an annual increase equal to the average of all the employees.
That is correct.
Now, there's a contract, the contract has some wording like that, but it doesn't say he must get a raise, right?
No, that, that is correct.
But we've always done that. I think that was the, pardon me, you look at the wording when you have to, but I think the intention has always been a pay raise consistent with the average of all the city employees, which is generally almost exactly the maximum raises for all the employees. Not quite, some people do not get the maximum. So the difference is, the difference is the manager by contract has been getting the average, and council pay is determined, our pay increases each year by the average increase of employees, not the maximum, but just the average. I want to make it clear, I think you, I think people heard that I voted no, I want to make it clear that I think Mr. Berry's doing a wonderful job. There's no conflict there. It becomes a matter of, it becomes a matter of how much is enough, how much is not enough, how much is too much, who decides, and how they decide. So it's kind of a philosophical difference, but I do want everyone to understand that I have all the confidence in the world in Mr. Berry. Okay, that enough? That's it?
I'd just like to say thanks for 10 years of service.
Thank you. My pleasure.
I'll count for 10 more.
Thank you.
10 more.
The next departmental report, I'll call on Assistant Public Services Director, Mr. Kevin Greer, to come to podium. This is requesting approval of an agreement for engineering services with McGill and Associates in the amount of $48,000 for some work at the, to design McLenn Creek wastewater pump station, which is a component of the Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment facility. Mr. Greer.
Mayor, I, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening, and thank you for letting me be standing before you this evening to talk about the Hickory-Kataba McLenn Creek Pumping Station. That's a mouthful, and I promise we'll bring it down. The purpose behind the request tonight, of course, is for council to consider a request of an agreement with McGill Associates to design and permit a wastewater pumping station for us. Now, the purpose of this wastewater pumping station is really to just continue the next evolution in our regional utilities. So as we plan for future service area, this is one of those areas that we, of course, plan to grow into. The Hickory-Kataba wastewater treatment facility, we actually bought the Town of Kataba's plant in 2003. I'm going to go through a couple of pictures here really quick. That facility was strategic. We bought that with the plan of growing into that Sherrill's Ford area because the Kataba County had already expressed an interest, and of course, there were neighboring towns that had expressed an interest in them being the ones to provide the service. So we bought that facility to continue our vision as a regional provider. And as you can tell, the plant was a 1959 vintage facility, not a lot of stuff had been done to it in that period of time. What we're excited about is in 2013, we actually started construction of our new facility, and here's some pictures of our new digs. We're actually running part of that facility now. Contract for construction is complete by the end of February. I'm probably going to go a little bit past that because, as you remember, the, particularly the July 27 flood that we had in 2013, that whole facility got flooded. And actually, for the plant never to have seen water up even on the mo ground, this job got flooded three different times in that period of construction. So we've, we've had our hands full down there. This facility is the baby sister to our Northeast plant, so it is an oxidation ditch facility. So it operates and, and for all intents and purposes, looks the same as what our Northeast plant does. But the purpose of this facility is to serve Kataba County service area down in the Sherrill's Ford community, the Town of Kataba, which we own the water and sewer, and of course, this treatment facility, and then that area, because when we plan for our utilities, we actually plan to serve a lot bigger area than just what we, just what we own. I mean, we really want to function as a, as a regional provider because the economy's of scale. The more people that we can serve, then the cheaper it is for everybody that we serve. So the Hickory-Kataba plant is a regional facility, so currently, Kataba County has some infrastructure that's in place. It is connected to this facility. We serve the Town of Kataba, and we're always planning for that next step, because again, we want to be that provider of choice. That's our goal. So the McLenn Creek Pumping Station is that next step in the evolution. It's, it's the pump station that's necessary to serve an area that's already been identified through some preliminary engineering reports that were completed in 2012 in partnership with several of us. So Kataba County, City of Hickory, and a couple other partners were involved in just an evaluation of what does this basin look like. So the McLenn Creek Pump Station is necessary in order to serve that area. So unfortunately, McLenn Creek sits quite a bit lower than what the plant does because of the flooding issues. So we have to kind of collect it in the lowest spot and then pump it to the top of the hill. So that's what makes this pump station necessary. The intent for this to do, because we're only doing the design and the permitting, is to get a project that's shovel-ready. What that does is, one, we, we cut the curve by about six to eight months when we look at how long it would take us to, to decide this agreement and come forward again and then have design done. So we're, we're trying to plan ahead. And it also gets us shovel-ready. And the shovel-ready component means, if you remember a couple of years back, the state had quite a bit of money for projects that were in that quote-unquote shovel-ready status. And what that means is plans are already in place and they're already permitted, so they're ready just to give you money and you can go to construction. Some of that stuff still happens. So we want to be in a position where, one, if a developer is ready and wants to spend some money, or if the state's got some money they want to spend, we want to, of course, give them an alternative to come to our Kataba plant. And again, as I mentioned, it does shorten that time for construction. So what we want to do is go ahead and have this design ahead of time to where, again, if something comes up, we're ahead of the curve. So before you tonight, council, is the, of course, the request, it's a recommendation from staff that we approve this agreement for engineering services with McGill and Associates to develop plans, specifications, and permitting for the McLenn Creek Pump Station. No construction, this is just the plans and the permitting for that project. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
This was an anticipated expenditure, anticipated project follow-up.
Yeah, we planned those future service areas, so absolutely, this is one that we've identified as a necessary.
This is not a changeable?
No, sir.
I make a motion, we approve this amount?
I'll second it.
Motion to write, second by layup, all in any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Your final departmental report from a staff standpoint was to consider or to receive an update on the construction of the Hickory Metro Convention Center parking deck. As I shared with you all in an email earlier today, the long and short of it is, we thought we would have some information to share with you all based on some soil work that we thought would be done on Monday at the site. The issue is, we have run into unexpected soil conditions, and the depth of those conditions being more than the architect can expect it. He wanted to come in and explain that to you all and have a possible solution, or a couple of solutions. However, with the weather on Monday, that work has not been done yet. So what I would recommend council do is table this item, and either at your workshop, or probably more likely, your December 2 council meeting, we'll have the architect come in and present that information to council as he's got it available.
Oh, appointments for commissions? I'd like to appoint Paul Carswell to the, is it the Community Appearance Commission?
Assistant.
Citizen Advisory, okay. The CAC, Citizen Advisory Committee, Paul Carswell.
Any other nominations? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by guests, second by receiver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Matter's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I move that we discuss briefly this suggestion from our taxi cab companies on the rate increase. I move that we enter into a discussion on that.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
I don't know where to start. I, you know, as I get older, I realize I know less and less. And one thing I don't know about is, you know, what the interplay between taxi cab rates and ridership and the city's authority as it relates to regulating cab companies within the city limits, I guess, as concessionaires. But I want to be responsive to our friends here, and I certainly, based on some of the examples that they gave, can understand why they're bringing it forward, so.
My first question is, what's key about the timing? When do we normally consider this, or do we only consider this when the cab companies raise the issue?
Let me, let me ask Chief Atkins to come to the podium and answer those questions.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, this has been a tradition that we work with our cab companies, whether it be three in the past, and now that we actually have two, but they're under the same ownership. But when that management group brings that to our attention, that they want us to consider that, we look at the statistics that are benchmarked against other agencies or other city jurisdictions throughout our region, and try to compare what they're doing and how we come up with that rate. The last rate increase was in May of 2006, and that was partly due to the raise of gas prices. Now, when gas prices go up and down, we don't run to you every single time and, you know, try to say, we need to lower it, or we raise it based on gas prices. But gas prices is probably one of the biggest things we consider when we change those rates. We don't traditionally do it like we do a fee schedule. Every budget that's, that's passed, we again look at it just when the management brings us to our attention. And I don't believe either one of you are in management, correct?
I'm not.
Okay, okay. So we haven't, we haven't heard directly from the management about this. This is the first time we've heard of it, when these two gentlemen brought it to our attention.
Does this just affect Yellow Cab? Is that the only entity that this would affect?
Yellow ain't diamond.
Right, but it's, they're owned by the same person.
But if a new company opened up, it would affect them.
So they all operate under the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my suggestion would be that the, the city manager's office, you know, get with Chief Atkins, and maybe we can have a look at it. Philosophically, I think Hickory needs a thriving and successful taxi service, and perhaps more than one, you know, so.
I'd like to see some statistics of those number of trips and how short they are, because the examples you certainly are calling for what they're getting for it, so I'd like to, perhaps, city manager's office, or your ownership, to get some statistics for us or some information in our place.
My question was, if the limousine services and the transport from the airport and the IHOP, it doesn't affect any of that, they don't follow the same rules?
Yeah, we'd be happy to bring back to you all the, the facts, the information, discuss it, how much I'd like to respond.
And also, I would think it'd be interesting to hear from the management and make sure that they're on board on the side.
Yes, sir.
You have a workshop or something?
I'll take my workshop.
Part of the whole report?
I think we just, we have to next meeting here, a meeting after that, just to gather together. Okay, just in the agenda, I'd be of your consideration.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. President for ready, you said, Friday?
Yes.
Anything else?
I just thought of something, and I messed up. I forgot to bring the flag that was presented at the Ellis Club for veterans. They presented us with a new flag for Oakwood Cemetery, and I left the house and left it on my desk, so I need to get that to the appropriate person so we can change out our flag at Oakwood Cemetery and honor our veterans.
Anything else? Well, everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Thanks for being here. We have a motion going to closed session for a recent special night event.
Closed session.
Motion by Seaver, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
I started drinking lemon juice when I first woke up, and I miss it, it was with me at uh.
Thank you.